Good morning. Welcome to our March 25, 2025, Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting. Our first item of business this morning is to stand and join me for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Motion to recess for economic development.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. At this time, we will open up our Economic Development Authority meeting. Agenda review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to this agenda.
Motion approved.
Got a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion on the agenda review. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. Minutes from March 11, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item number four, capital improvement project number for Breckenridge Path. We got Luke. Good morning, Luke.
Good morning, Luke.
Good morning, Chair. I'm with the board.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Luke Peterson, City of Mankato Facilities Division.
Welcome.
I'm here to present the bid award item for the Breckenridge Path Landscaping Phase Two project. On Friday, February 21, we received three compliant quotations for the project. Chambers excavating and trucking out of Mankato, Minnesota had the low quotation of $8,804.50. Facility staff had estimated the value of the work to be $24,995.25. So with that said, the quotations came in substantially lower than we'd expected. I guess with that said, facility staff is recommending the quotation to be accepted at this time.
For $8,804.50?
Correct.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Questions or comments?
It's good.
No? I just have a comment that that program over there is a very nice facility. So it's nice to see if they get the likes.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
It is very well received and it's been a good asset to the community. So thanks for keeping it looking up. We appreciate that.
Thanks. Good to see you.
No problem.
Have a great day. We better get you a vote here first. Any other discussion then? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. There you go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thanks, Luke.
Yep.
Any other items to bring before us for the EDA?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Got a motion and a second to adjourn the EDA meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries. Item number four on our agenda is the DNR land acquisition. Come on forward. Good morning.
Good morning.
Identify yourself for the record, please.
All right. I'm Stein Inver. I'm the Area Wildlife Supervisor with the Minnesota DNR.
Welcome.
Thank you. So today, looking for a resolution for land acquisition for a new wildlife management area in Blue Earth County. We're calling it the Picnic Rock Wildlife Management Area. And it's right on Highway 169, Highway 60, just south of State Park.
Very nice area.
Yeah, it's absolutely beautiful. Really looking forward to this one.
Are you?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, this one, it combines the opportunity for outdoor recreation on a unit close to town that has some unique features, you know, the river frontage especially. When I walked down there, getting up was a little bit different, but going down was easy, tuck and roll kind of thing. Yeah, it's just wonderful piece of property.
All right. Good. Any questions or comments? So is there entertaining a motion for the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second.
Just a couple of questions. As we do this, I've had some calls from some, well, landowners, property taxpayers, I guess, more than anything. And as we're going through budget cuts with the state of Minnesota, we've got the governor's budget, which is the governors, not the legislators, I get that. But as we're looking at cuts or really shifts, and one of the things that keeps us awake is the shifts to Health and Human Services and what will that do to our levy. But the other thing in his revised budget, now we're talking about cuts to PILT or payment in lieu of taxes. And every time we take something off the county tax roll, it just makes a bigger payment for everybody else. Where do you see the governor's budget and his direction to cuts and payment in lieu of taxes? How will that affect this or other government land in the county?
Yeah, I'm not the one to address those facts in detail. It's not part of my daily work responsibilities, but I can tell you that PILT is paid from general funds. It's not paid from the Fish and Wildlife Budget or DNR Budget. It comes from general fund money. The calculations for this property put it at over $1,000 more than the current tax levy for the estimate for 2025, '26. It's on your hand out there. So I think there's a buffer in there so that you won't see a loss, but I really, in fact, I didn't know that they were even talking about a PILT decrease in this year's budget. I haven't followed it. Our lands and minerals people could certainly reach out to you and give you a better idea on how that'll be set, but that's not something that I deal with, the budgeting process. But I feel very good about it. If you look at the history of PILT and the willingness of the legislature to fund PILT has always been very strong. So that's about all I can offer on that.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
But I do think we have to recognize that this could be additional. If we don't get those PILT dollars, we only really have one way to balance our budget in the county, and that's levy increase. So.
One of the recent changes that I do know about is that, I think it was last year or the year before, they changed the PILT formula so that it never decreases. So the PILT that is set for this acquisition based on a three quarters to 1% formula will never go down. It can only reflect changes in your appraisals. Does that make sense?
I cut it.
Well, yeah, and it depends on how, if they cut it, past programs. It comes up a lot, and it's a concern of every kind.
Absolutely.
Do one of these.
Certainly recognize, yeah.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none. I have a motion and a second for the resolution. There's no further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. At this time, we will move on to item number five. We'll be talking about County Ditch 56, Branch Three hearing for petitioner for reroute and repairs. Are there any changes to the agenda today, Ryan?
No, sir. No, Mr. Chair.
Nope. Being no changes to the agenda, can I get a motion and a second for the agenda?
I'll move it.
Second. Okay, got a motion and a second for the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The purpose of today's hearing is to present the Engineers' Advisors' Report and to receive comments from all parties affected by the proposed petition for impound reroute and diversion affecting portions of County Ditch 56, Branch Three. The order of business for the hearing is as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents. We will hear from the appointed engineer, and then we will open it up for public comment. I will ask Ryan Henner, who's Blue Earth County Drainage Coordinator, to review the jurisdictional documents at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hearing notices for today were mailed out on March 11, 2025. Notice was also posted outside of this building, the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse. Public affidavit that was run in the Mankato Free Press on March 11, 2025. Informational meeting to discuss this matter was held on January 30, 2025, and our engineers advisory report was submitted to staff on March 13, 2025. I also have a quick memo. County Ditch 56 watershed is approximately 9,400 acres in size and located in Garden City and Lincoln Townships. On November 25, 2024, a petition to impound reroute and divert portions of County Ditch 56, Branch Three, was received on behalf of petitioners from Minnesota Valley Lands LLC and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, a bureau of the U.S. Department of Interior. The proposed petition affects portions of property lying in Sections Nine, Sixteen, and Seventeen of Garden City Township, Blue Earth County. Drainage Authority Attorney KLR Van Brugan of Rankin-Neunen has reviewed the petition and found it to be adequate for these proceedings with no bond needed as a federal agency is one of the listed petitioners. On December, excuse me, on December 17, 2024, Charles J. Brandel, ISG, was appointed as the engineer for these proceedings in order to produce and submit an engineers advisory report pertaining to the proposed petition. By order on March 11 of 2025, the County Ditch 56 Drainage Authority set March 25, 2025 at 9:00 AM for the final hearing. The request at today's hearing, we are requesting the Drainage Authority approve of the draft findings in order, approving of the petition for Branch Three of County Ditch 56 to impound reroute and divert, that the engineer be ordered to make ready construction plans suitable for public bidding and construction of the approved petition reroute and repairs. That is all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. Do I have a motion to accept the affidavits into the record?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second.
Second.
Motion and a second to the records. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. All right. At this time, I will invite the ISG staff. Please come forward for the engineers advisory report.
All right.
Please identify yourselves for the record.
Good morning. Chuck Brandel with ISG, Jacob Mueller with ISG. So we've got a short presentation on the summary of the repair report. This is a project we've been working on for quite some time. As you guys are aware, County Ditch 56 is at many projects, 9,000 acres. We clean the ditch approximately every eight years, some lighter soils in this area. But when you look at the whole watershed, which is shown in red, we're looking at this yellow area, which is mostly Branch Three. And over the past few years, there's been areas that have failed, need repair. But at the same time, U.S. Fish and Wildlife and Minnesota Valley Lands have purchased some property and want to do some restorations. So we've worked with them to develop what we're going to show you as a, hopefully, a more efficient way to repair this system. And that's what was petitioned. So just a brief history, system is over 100 years old. There's been branch tiles added to it. And like I said, it's been, the open ditch gets repaired every eight years. And there's also sediment issues with the city of Lake, in the city of Lake Crystal and Crystal Lake. So anything we can do to reduce that and protect that saves dollars on the system and also for the city. So we started looking at this repair back in 2021. We did, I think, 12 different options, looked at improvements, different ways to repair this. How could even land swaps and other things that could work? And have had many meetings on this. Eventually, through those meetings, the petition was developed, submitted, and we came up with the project that we're going to go over. And here's that petition. Since this is a larger repair, more than 175,000, you need a report, you need plans, you need to publicly bid it. And thus, we're currently here. We have the report completed and at the hearing to go over that. So I'll let Jacob take over here for a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely. So like Chuck was saying, we're focused primarily on Branch Three here. If you can see my mouse on the screen, Branch Three outlets into the mainline open ditch just east of County Road 20. Starts out as a 42-inch tile. Further upstream, it accepts lateral G, another pretty large constituency with the branch. As we work up, lateral H breaks off, and then Branch Three starts to path through the Minnesota Valley Lands property, as well as several United States properties. So you can see and hear that Branch Three, lateral K, lateral L, lateral M, and lateral N, all path through significant portions of non-farmed property, public lands that don't really need the tile in there. So as we look a little bit closer, another pretty characteristic piece of this area is its topography. The upstream portions of lateral or Branch Three are very low, nearly equivalent in elevation to the downstream portion. So we're working with a very flat watershed in this case. This was fairly important in design considerations. You can see right here, we're looking at a digital elevation map. White areas being the highest elevation with yellow, green, and blue areas being lower in elevation.
It also has many restorable wetlands in that area that are fairly easy to restore with some tile reroutes.
So as a portion of discovering what is going on in the system, earlier in this process, back towards 2021, when we started looking into improvement and repair options, we did some televising in the area to determine what was the condition of the tile. And as expected for a system that's over 100 years old, many portions began to fail and are in need of repair in some means or another. When we look at capacities of the system, a lot of the system displays about a .2 to .3 inch per day drainage coefficient, which is simply a measure of capacity of agricultural drainage tile. Typically, a capacity of half an inch per day is recommended for similar systems. So when we look at our proposed options here, the first thing we're going to look at is capacity. Our proposed system involves realignment. So in here, to remain in keeping with the definition of repair, we're trying not to improve capacity. So for lateral H and Branch Three, we've mimicked the exact same capacity that the existing system did have, which was about a .21 inch per day drainage coefficient. A few things on that. So what we're seeing on this image here is what would be a standard repair. This involves replacement of all the lines where issues were seen to get capacity and repaired tile to all of those areas which needed. So this is what would be a standard repair. It starts out as a 30-inch for Branch Three at the terminus of the repair and works all the way up to an 8-inch where we get onto the Williard property south of this east-west road here. Laterals H, lateral M, and lateral N would also be repaired in this scenario, as well as sublateral B. Now, a couple of issues with this is the way the tile routes is relatively inefficient. You can kind of see that they almost wrap around to touch one another. So there's some inefficiencies in alignment there. Similarly, there's a lot of tile pathing beneath U.S. Fish and Wildlife land where it's not necessarily needed. So it's just kind of extra length for nothing, extra cost for nothing. So like Chuck was saying earlier, we've developed about 12 options for repair improvements, you know, just trying to find the best possible solution. Ultimately, through those, through that process, we generally determined that a repair was the right way to go. It's kind of what landowners wanted to pursue. So that kind of led us to this. It kind of marries the best interests of the landowners, as well as allows future restoration of wetlands in these public lands, as well as allows the potential for future acquisition and wetland restoration if that's pursued.
One thing I do want to note on, we're stopping in the middle of this branch. We did televise the entire outlet to look at the condition of that and worked with landowners and said, if that is in poor condition, we'll repair it. It's not in too bad a shape. It's, so we're going to keep that portion. That will be a future repair, but it was in a lot better shape than we thought compared to the middle of the system. So we're going to keep that at this point. Yeah. That was one of the options. One note also, if you go back, all the pink areas shown on the map, there have been easements obtained since they're new alignments. There were easements obtained when the system was originally constructed. We do have easements that have been obtained from these landowners. Really, there are no cost easements, and they'll get paid temporary damages for the construction.
So a little bit on this, this map here, you can see some of the areas in orange. These involve the areas that would be rerouted and then subsequently abandoned from the public system. So following this, the pink lines would be the public system, the newly repaired lines, and then orange lines would be permanently abandoned. So ultimately, these reroutes give each branch or each relative drainage area the same capacity that they did have in their original construction condition, but just pathing through different lines. So something kind of unique here is that, you know, where Branch Three in this location would have normally passed to the north, it actually routes through lateral H in this new condition. So different alignments, different ways it's getting back to the downstream portions of Branch Three, but the same capacity.
I did most of the construction practices that we've been over.
For sure.
But there's one. Go to the next slide. We did factor in that there will be construction damage and factor that into our cost, and that also was included when we talked about easements. So just a picture of, that's County Ditch 52, so.
So looking at project costs for these kind of two alternatives, again, there's the project we're actually proposing, and then a similar project, which would be standard to get the same capacity, the same function for landowners. So the option that we proposed with reroutes costs about 1.1 million, a little bit over that. And then a standard repair would be a little over 1.4 million. So pursuing these reroutes, this petition project actually results in about $300,000 of cost savings and still provides the same function for landowners.
And it will provide some of those properties that are not in production to more easily construct wetlands or restore wetlands. So it will also provide some more benefit to the system. We did factor in some road recosts. We are crossing gravel road three times. We have talked with public work staff on that. They are aware of what we're doing here. So there's a little bit of extra cost for those.
We did perform a multi-purpose drainage management study. The purpose of this is to highlight potential best management practices that can be pursued in the watershed.
And is required for all drainage projects, so.
So here's kind of a map of that. This project inherently involves the enhanced potential for restoring wetlands in the future, as well as presently when it goes in. So that's kind of something that's fundamentally tied into this project is the ability to pursue more best management practices to enhance the water quality of Lake Crystal and reduce sediment within the city of Lake Crystal.
So in conclusion, you know, we feel that this project is a more efficient way to repair the system. We've worked with landowners. We've had many meetings with landowners. It's cost effective. It's needed. There's certain properties that don't have drainage because their tile has failed. So it's a necessity. So we recommend approving the project, ordering plans and specs, bidding the project. If moved forward today, potentially there could be work this year that happens. So we may need to inform some landowners about staking easements and planting, but more than likely, it might be a later this week. But we do recommend approving it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chuck and Jacob, for that report. Is there any questions from the board at this time for the engineers? Hearing none. At this time, I will open it up for public comment portion of our hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and there are a five-minute time limit. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. The county administrator will keep the time and give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you're, use your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit time allowed to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under the consideration by the board. At this time, is there anyone that would like to comment? Please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 56 hearing, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the county board. And what are your wishes from the county board?
I will move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Questions, comments? I think it's a good project. We've been working on this for, as Chuck said, for a long time.
Yep.
Good project, so.
Yep.
Well, at this time, I have a motion to approve the engineers report and the repairs ordering the final plans and specifications for the engineer and the bidding and construction of these proceedings. If there's no other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Appreciate it. Chuck, thanks for all your work on this. Ryan? All right, Ryan, you still, we got to finish this up. Anything else to bring for us on this item? If not, can I get a motion to adjourn the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Now, that concludes our hearing. One more item.
Yep, one more from drainage.
All right.
This one is for County Ditch Five. Blue Earth County Ditch Five watershed is approximately 10,200 acres in size and located in Danville and Meado Townships. A petition to all let additional acres into CD5 was received on September 27 of 2024. Drainage Authority Attorney KLR Van Brugan of Rankin-Neunen reviewed the petition and supporting documents, found it to be adequate for these proceedings. On October 22 of 2024, the Drainage Authority appointed engineer Charles J. Brandel of ISG to review the petition and order an engineers' review report be submitted to the Drainage Authority for the proposed effects. be submitted to the Drainage Authority for the proposed effects to the County Ditch five public drainage system. The Drainage Authority also appointed viewer Mark Behrens to make a viewer report with recommendations for an outlet fee and benefits for the property. The reports have been received, and we're now ready to hold a hearing on the petition. Request for today, at today's meeting, we request the Drainage Authority set a hearing date for the proposed outlet petition for County Ditch five for April eighth, two thousand twenty-five at nine AM, sir.
All right, you heard the request. What are the wishes of the board?
I'll move second.
Got a motion and a second to accept the hearing date. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ryan. See you this afternoon for Fairbuck Council. Thanks, Chuck and Jacob. All right, at this time, Lisa must be out in the hallway.
I did see her out there, Mr. Chair, so.
All right, we will get to the right page here and we'll.
Are you ready for me?
Yes, we are. Good morning, Lisa.
That was quick.
Yeah, we had a busy morning already.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here to present the spending resolution for issuing bonds. It's our county practice that we normally approve a spending resolution. So if we do bond, we have that reimbursement period for the bond, which goes back sixty days from the date it's approved, and then it goes forward eighteen months once it's placed in service. Does anyone have any questions about this?
I have some questions, and I appreciate you coming to the work session the other day. As we all know, we had good discussion at the work session. And it's my understanding that the twenty million that we have in here is just a cap. We don't have to bond at all if we don't want to. But this just puts a marker in the ground that we can go up to on our building.
Correct.
So after having some more discussion and reviewing your documents that you sent us, and I'm thinking that the twenty million might be just a little low at this point. I have, I'm not sure I'm ready to support a bond at all, but I do want to make sure we are covered in the future. Because when we looked at those runouts that you had, they're alarming. The next eight or ten years, not very bad, but fifteen or twenty years, it gets to be problematic at the end of the day. And then the other item, a couple of things that came up at the meeting that I was very interested in, you brought up the levy limits, which we haven't seen those for several years. But if those come back into play again, they get to be problematic. We try to pay cash for this, and we have levy limits. We can't replenish our cash.
We do have to remember that that can still happen. You just never know with the legislation.
And then I was also a little alarmed by the comment that Candace made about the personnel line. And our projections show that we're already over that limit, and so we're not even meeting that assumption at this point. So with that, I'd just like to get some more discussion. We had a good discussion at the work session the other day, but I would be supportive of a larger number than the twenty million dollars for the bond.
I would, too. I think thirty makes more sense.
And the other reason why I thought about this a little more detail is we have two bonds that are getting paid off, and so we would have a way to pay the bond up to a twenty-five or thirty million dollar bond without actually increasing any levy at all in the future. We probably have a little overlap, from my understanding, but in general, the overlap would hardly be noticeable at this point, and we're just really.
That is correct. I think we talked about that in the work session, too.
And I know when we talk levy limit and budgets, I always like to bring up, would you rather have levy or bond? And usually, you know, you like to have more levy, but the problem with the levy is you can't guarantee the levy. I mean, I can't sit here and tell you, I'll give you five percent to replenish our cash if we pay for this in cash, because the board changes. And someone, you might get another group in here and says, nope, we're going to hold zero all the way across. We're not going to give you any more bonds, or any more levies. So bond is a good way to really secure the future of the. Is there a limit that we're stuck at? Twenty, twenty-five, thirty, is there a?
Well, it would be the cost, what we would reimburse regarding the building, which I think is projected at forty million.
Right.
We have incurred a little cost already.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Lisa is right. Our total estimated cost for the project is forty million. We have incurred a lot of those soft costs of engineering and design that have probably been paid before the sixty-day lookback that we can do with this resolution. So I don't believe you could have a resolution here today that would go up to forty million, because you won't.
We won't have those expenses.
We won't likely have that level of expenditure that would be eligible, but certainly at that thirty million, there's room to consider that.
Other discussion, questions, comments? We had good discussion the other day at the meeting, so.
Well, you know, we're in good financial shape now. I think that's a good place to stay. There's a lot of unknowns out there with, we've already talked about, you know, governor's budget and what shifts might come to the county. We've got that little thing called the bridge in the Rapidan Dam that although we'll have some federal help, that sometimes is delayed and things like that. We don't want to be in a position, so I would be supportive of the increase as well.
Okay, let's just pick a number and we'll get a motion.
I picked thirty.
You picked thirty? Thank you, Patty. Is that a motion?
I move to thirty.
I will second that.
What was it again?
A motion for the resolution to go to thirty million bond. And again, this is just a stake in the ground. We don't have to go there, but this just does give us, as Josh mentioned in the past with some of the conversations we've had, that there's just a lot of unknowns. In the next eight, nine, ten months, we'll have a little better picture of that. So I just think we need to prepare for that, so. All right, I got a motion and a second for the resolution, but increasing the bond limit from twenty to thirty million. Everybody clear on the motion?
Clear.
Any other discussion? Big decision. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Stephanie has the files, so she can definitely change that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, with that, we'll move down to human services.
Or up.
Up.
Depending on who you're talking about.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning.
Morning, Phil.
Good to see you, Phil.
Good to see you, too. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, for hearing me today. I have a couple of, I guess, three really action items, areas that I bring to your attention. As a first piece, the first of those being in support of housing, Cherry Ridge memorandum, which is a renewal that we've had before. It's a partnership between City of Manquito and Southwest, Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership and ourselves. And we collaborate on rental assistance and the support of services that go into the Cherry Ridge Housing Project. There are eight households that are served by the project. The city does the rental vouchers. Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership does in-kind administrative support and the grant work. There is a breakdown for the board to look at rental assistance, sixty-six thousand. Our part of the HUD grant is up to sixty-one nine eighty-six. And then Southwest, their part of administration also comes out of our sixty-one nine eighty-six. The term of the MOU is August first of twenty-four through July thirty-first of twenty-five. The reason we're backdating this is it was delayed at HUD, and then again, came through the city finally to us. So it was kind of out of our hands in that regard, but that is the term of this MOU. The next issue is our Blue River County Housing Development and Program Priorities Policy. This is also a work session issue that we went through, and it really is about that concept of bringing in a tiered approach to priorities as we do development in the community. So what I mean by that is if there's housing residential developments from an outside vendor, that we evaluate that based on who they're going to serve and put a priority on our own folks and our own community. And then there's like three different tiers that we'd approach in order to evaluate anything like that that comes in the future. This whole agreement, I think it's a two-page agreement, was in the packet this month, but it is, as we talked about it prior, as far as wanting some guideline, right now, we don't really have anything that we go by. And so this will give us some guidance as far as how we discuss this with potential vendors and providers in our community. And finally, I have advisory committee appointments. First one is Paige Dernberger, District Four. Second one is Janelle Syke, District Four as well. Kristin Net, District Five, and Vanessa Jones from District Two. So I'd asked the board's support to have them appointed or reappointed to the advisory committee. And that's my action items for today.
All right, thank you, Phil. Any questions or comments on the action items?
I would move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the action items. Thank you for the people volunteering to be on our committees. We appreciate that. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of informational discussion items to look at the board, look over with the board. First of those being financial assistance data from two thousand twenty-four. You'll see the graphs as they're in your packet, the first one being financial assistance, and it includes all the programs. That pattern of the increase, you know, twenty-one through twenty-three, and now coming back down, is our COVID picture. And I think coming back down to what will be, you know, kind of a high normal, meaning I think it'll be right where it is this year and probably start to flatten out now. We see this represented in this graph, which combines all programming, and then there is some breakdown in this healthcare programs is the next slide. Same pattern of cases, a bubble up and then a coming back down. And I will comment on what, how that went for staff as well. The line graph is a little bit difficult to look at and a little bit blurry. I apologize for that. We tried to improve that, and we just could not. So we'll have to redo that altogether. The marketed ones are the first two at the top, well, that end up near the top, and that is regarding our group residential housing. So there's an uptick in people needing that support for their housing. And what was formerly known as GRH, a lot of you have heard that over the years, but now it's called housing support. And then the other one that's markedly trending upward is general assistance. And the nuance to that one is people get general assistance when they're in treatment for their personal care, like if they need just their day-to-day supplies. And so it is showing that people are going to treatment more often now, just in the last year. And so that's both good and bad. We're glad people are getting treatment, but it also is an expensive piece for us, and it obviously takes time to administrate. The next graph is SNAP, which is supplemental nutrition assistance and what, you know, formerly known as food support. And you'll see that that one is climbing without hitch. That had some special rules to it, federal dollars, and so that's just a stair step, and we'd expect that to probably level off, but it's hard to know what kind of normal we're going to have now post-COVID. Staff did provide some notes on this and just a few things to highlight to the board just to fill in kind of what's happening in the community and with people that need this support. In healthcare, we went through the whole unwinding process. You've heard that kind of strange title. But the big thing was that during COVID, they took back the asset limit. So in other words, if you had assets, if you had a home or cars paid off, they didn't count against if you qualified or not. And that was true for those years that we saw there. And now we're having to go back and figure out assets again. And so a lot of people are falling off the rolls is what's happening. It's decreasing, but as you can imagine, it's a lot of work for staff. They basically have to go through everything that was kind of on hold and go back through again with a fine-tooth comb and get this right. And so they're well on their way. We're ahead of the curve, which I'm very pleased about, but it is a lot of work. The cash part of support that is offered through MFP also changed significantly in that it used to be a month to month. People would have to kind of show if anything changed with their job, anything changed with their circumstances. Now it's six months, and so that helps in the long haul where we won't be doing as much paper. But in the short term, it threw us kind of sideways that we had to redo everything, again, go through all cases and put them on a six-month cycle. And I do think that this will decrease the number of administrative closures over time, and it'll create more stability for people, but less kind of looking with the fine-tooth comb in that area. Housing supports, I talked about group residential housing. We do have the effect from chemical health that people are needing a place to get their treatment and to stay as they're in that transitional care. We also talked about general assistance related to the substance abuse. The only other one I had a note on was SNAP, and we've talked about the college population. SNAP has continued to stair-step up, and that is a little different trend line through COVID. In order for college students to qualify for this, they need to work twenty hours per week. So that's the standard that people are going to in that way. But they can qualify if they do have that work involvement and then also qualify based on assets and income. So yeah, returning to pre-COVID levels, the complexity in the system continues to be, what staff talked about, is just it's hard to maneuver through, and it's hard for people to understand sometimes exactly where they sit, because we have, I think, close to forty programs now and all, so it's a lot to meander through. And that's why I always have some fear that you're going to ask me in the weeds questions that I don't. I don't know. So it's very complex. All right, the second part, Mr. Chair, is about fraud prevention. We've gone over these metrics before. You'll see the chart year over year of our performance, and the cost benefit ratio is CBR. That's the one that we look at most closely. And you'll see the state average is higher than we are at this point, but the required level is three dollars return on investment, and we have five thirty-eight in twenty-four. So we're still doing quite well. There has been a decrease in overpayments, and there was another change. So I'm trying to highlight kind of those policy changes that have happened. And this affects our relationship with PAT in that we no longer can go after overpayments if there was a technical glitch. It has to be the person's fault. So in other words, if the system wrongly paid them, they get to keep that. If they somehow falsified, didn't disclose, and often it's an honest mistake, they just didn't tell us a change that happened, then we would go back and ask for PAT's help and his staff to go and recover that money. The number overall for fraud was, the savings were seven hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars. So again, a very good number, a big number. I think it's something we all value, that we look at the quality within the program and the accuracy within the program. You will see that chart in the box that kind of walks through how you get to that number. They combine cost savings, overpayments, credits, the criminal credits I mentioned, to get to that total, and then they divide that by our costs, and you'll see that there. And the rest of it is really some definitions just provided by staff for us so that we're clear about what we're talking about. But that's what I had for today.
Thank you, Phil, for that report. Is there any questions or comments for Phil? I don't have anything on your report today, Phil, but I do want to extend a thank you from the county board for your staff. Was it just last Friday or that Friday that you did the presentation for the
Yeah.
Technical support? We had a couple of senators here, which I appreciate them guys taking the time to come down. I think Senator Friend stuck around for a few minutes and talked with your staff.
Right, really good.
I don't know how much good it does, but it certainly opened my eyes as to what you guys have to deal with and the frustrations.
And in all humility, mine, too. I mean, we do get removed when you have an administrative role. You're several steps away from that trench, and I appreciate, I know what staff did, that you were all there and listened and supported them and heard some of in-the-weeds perspective, because it is a different perspective than sometimes what we coming across from our chairs. And so that connection, I highly valued, and I appreciate you being willing to host that.
And from my understanding, I think things went fairly well for them that day. I was talking with Nancy from MICA.
Yes.
And she said they had the. And she said they had the same demonstration from one of the metro counties, and it worked relatively good for the demonstration, but the day before, the system was down for seven hours.
Right. Just froze.
Just froze up, seven hours.
Yeah.
And when you're processing paperwork all day on a computer and it froze up, guess what?
Right.
You can't do nothing.
Exactly right.
Extend your thank you to the staff.
I will do that, Commissioner. Thank you. Thank you all.
Spent a lot of time putting that together.
Yeah.
You know, it's hard for them, so.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Good to see you.
Any other questions for Phil or comments? Okay. Thank you for that report.
Thank you very much.
All right. This time we'll move to item number nine, the poor farm land. Josh.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Today we're here, have two items. The first item is the Blue Earth County Poor Farm bids. On March 17th, the bids were open for the, the poor farm. As we went through this process, they were split into six separate parcels with bids accepted for each individual parcel. In parcel one, there were three bids received with a range from 152,000 to 165,000. These bids came in below the expected amount. And when I say the expected amount, this was something as we've engaged with Wingert Land Services and working with them of what they thought was lower than the expected amount based on what they thought it would receive in the open market. In parcel two, there were four bids received with a range from 100,000 to 210,000. Again, where bids came in below the expected amount. Parcel number three, six bids were received with a range from 484,000 to 746,000. These bids came in below the expected amount for this parcel. Parcel number four, two bids were received with a range from 20,000 to 88,000, with the bids coming in below the expected amount. Parcel number five, two bids received with a range from 25,000 to 103,000, and the bids came in below the expected amount. And parcel number six, there were seven bids were received with a range from 343,000 to 749,000, and the bids came in below the expected amount for this parcel. So after all the bids were open and conversation with Wingert Land Services, it was determined that they felt that all of these bids were lower than what was expected. And we also felt that there was a likelihood that engaging them to sell these parcels in a traditional format versus this process that was done is something that is, that we were subjected to by the state of Minnesota with statutory language, that we had to do this one bid, sealed bid process. But the feeling was is that in this formal, a different process would yield better results for the county. As a result of where these bids came in and as a result of the conversation with the broker that was engaged to give professional advice and professional services, the recommendation is that the county board would recommend the bids for each parcel, and then we would move to the next process of the statute where we'd be able to sell these parcels in a traditional format with a breaker, a broker relationship with the potential buyer.
All right. Thank you, Josh. I will open it up for some discussion because we have to make a decision whether to reject or accept the bids on the resolution. So I would think it'd be appropriate to have a little discussion beforehand on which direction we want to go. And I'll start out. Again, Josh, you summarized it very well that I wasn't comfortable with the process. I didn't like the process that we had to do the sealed bid things. I had several calls from constituents that said, why are you doing it this way? And they were frustrated by that process. I think we would have better luck, a better result going out for bids. And the other constituency that I've been talking to, they're, they think we should try to get as much as we can, obviously, out of this. And taking the recommendations of the people that are professionals, I think makes a lot of sense. So would like some other feedback from the rest of the board members.
Chair, I guess a question and a comment. The comment first, you know, where you, I think, I was kind of clear when we started this process, why are we doing it this way? And the answer was pretty clear because that's what the law says. You know, and this is not what agriculture is typically used to. It's, you know, you need to have a bid to kind of get into the door and go from there. But my question is, and the number one question I've got from constituents is, help me understand, and I'm gonna skip ahead to the resolution even though it's not appropriate, but where it talks about any and all mineral, minerals and mineral rights in, and two said parcels and land shall be expressly reserved of Blue Earth County as provided by law. That was the number one question. What does that mean? Does that mean we still can have a gravel pit on somebody else's farm?
Josh, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Pat, that was a question that I also received considerable attention from, from Wingert Land Services. Really, that is also state statute that says something that the county has to do is preserve those mineral rights. With working with, with our county attorney's office, looking at what the DNR has provided is, that does not include gravel. So when they're really looking at minerals, they're looking at an iron ore or a high-value type of mineral, not looking at...
Gold in Blue Earth County.
Well, gold, silver, and all those things. I don't think we found that. But that is one of the things that we heard a lot about. And as we go forward and go through the process, one of the things we've talked about with Wingert Land Services is that when we get to the point of a purchase and doing a purchase agreement, is putting in the purchase agreement that this does not include gravel, silica, sand, things like that, because that is what's very common. Although a mineral, that's not what case law and what the, what they said the purpose of the statute was. So we would be looking and putting into any purchase agreement that that mineral rights does not include gravel. Because that was one of the questions that we heard, we did hear and Wingert Land Services heard is like, well, this means gravel. You can come in and the county could take that gravel. That is not the intention of the statute. That's not what the case law dictates. And so our county attorney's office has provided some language that we would put into those purchase agreements to exclude gravel from that.
So I think my two follow-up questions then were maybe answered. So, you know, and number one was, does that, did that have an impact on these bids from the current bids? And two, are we better off to clarify that if we move through with this process?
To say for sure that it impacted it, I, I don't think I could say that 100%, but based on some of the comments and the feedbacks that Wingert Land Services received, I think it could have impacted that because they said there was people that are really having a difficult time on that process of the mineral rights. And what does that mean? Does that mean that if we gave that, could we come in, could we explore, could we do that? So I think through this, we could make it clear, probably, you know, on their, whether they're dealing with potential buyers on the website, that this does not include gravel, sand, silica, that we can make that clear that. We do have to preserve iron ore and other precious minerals like that. But that's the problem is it's, the statute is very vague. Basically, how that's written is how the statute is written as well. So we just wanted to make sure we are the ones that we were hearing about with gravel, that we would make sure we excluded that one. Thank you.
My question is, can we reject, like, some of the parcels and not reject some of the others? Can we reject, like, five and not reject the sixth one? Because I'm looking at some of them and looking at what, what the bids were in, on parcel number six, there's a pretty large difference between number one and number two. And I'm concerned if we go back to the, to Wingert's, and I respect exactly, especially what, what he does, because he's an expert in what he does, is that we'll get less for that land than what we're, what we, what we got a bid for right now.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Sternberg, when you look at parcel six, that is the entire range. So that's, I mean, so that's the low and the high. There were also several bids in between that with 749,000 being higher. The next bid was 674,000.
Right.
So there is definitely a range.
So we have about $100,000 difference between number one and number two. And, and if, and if we go back again on that, it's not saying we're gonna get the 750,000 again. So my, that's, that's my concern here. My concern is, is, is I completely understand what we're going through here, but I don't want to lose on a parcel either.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Sternberg, the short answer is yes, the county board could pick and choose on how they do that. I think one thing to say is if you did reject and you say, and there's that concern, the county board does not have to sell this land. So even if you say that we don't get to 749,000, it could keep the land and look at going back to a lease arrangement like has been for years with the poor farm property. And that, you know, that is a question, I think that, I mean, it's a, I, I understand your question, but I think, and that's the thing we look at is from when we started going through the process of getting to the point of listing this land and getting the bids, there's a lot of things that have changed in, in our, in our world and our states of this as well. So can we guarantee that it'll go above that 749,000? And I also say the county board does not have to sell it for, at all, if they choose to maintain this property.
Well, we understand that. I mean, all of us have been here through this whole process, and we made the decision to sell the property. Like I said, and I have a feeling no matter what process we're gonna do, we're gonna sell the property. But I just don't want the county losing money on, on going back again. That's my whole thing. And for the other parcels, they're very close, and I understand, but for that parcel alone, obviously whoever did that made, made a good effort in, in what, putting their bid in. So that's, that's my whole concern. My, my motion would be to have parcel number one through five rejected and, and have parcel number six a separate vote.
Number six, what?
So you're, you're making a motion to pass a resolution on one through five to reject them?
Correct.
Okay. Do I have a second to that motion?
What was the sixth, number six you said? I just, that's the first five?
The first five. I have a motion on the table to approve one or to reject one through five at this point. We'll leave it at that. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Other, other discussion?
I, I really, I appreciate, Commissioner, your, your thoughts on that. And there was seven bids on that one, but as we've got something, only have two bids, and my math isn't very good, but we only have two bids and they range from 20 to 88,000, and there's only two of them, I'm guessing those, that's what the two bids were. That's quite a, quite a range. My concern is, and felt I couldn't support that, is as we look at this, and I don't want to compare it to a drainage project, but no matter what we do, we need findings and fact and things like that. My concern is if we're gonna pick and choose to make sure that we have the correct findings and reasoning for picking one and not another and things like that, as you look at that. So I, I would not support splitting them. I think that we need to, we need to be consistent with all six parcels.
And I would agree with that, Commissioner. I think it just, just for the fact of having things uniform and the same, I think makes more sense. So that's why I wouldn't support that. And I think we do have a lot better chance on the open market. Again, as I referred to in my opening comments, I had several calls after we put this out for bid, and I'm not in the farming market, but as Kevin alluded to, that's not the way they do it. And several people that called me were frustrated that, why are you doing it this way? They wanted it the old conventional way. So we can get to that point. And we still have gravel on one of those parcels maybe. So I think there's other opportunities for others.
Other discussion? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion to reject all of the bids in the resolution. I got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? I think we had good discussion here. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, Josh, for all your work on that. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. And so the second item...
You'll keep us posted. Yes.
Okay. And the second item is the resolution authorizing the sale of the Blue Earth County Poor Farm through the engagement of a broker and delegating authority to the county administrator to accept or reject offers. This is something done as under state statute. After you go through the process with the sealed bid opportunity and they're rejected, this would be the resolution going forward to work with the broker and have our county administrator sign or accept or reject any of those offers going forward.
After advising the county board, of course.
Absolutely.
Okay. Did we understand the resolution?
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution to authorize the administrator to reject or accept bids. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, so this, again, with, with the exception probably of mineral rights, and we've talked about this would be very similar to in the past where we've had a resolution to do things and run it through. Like, but I'd forget the lady, the lady with the house.
The shop at Three Probst.
Yes, yeah. So this would be a similar resolution.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Pat, this is the exact same process that we did that time working with the county attorney's office to put this together, to delegate that authority.
So we're being consistent.
We're being very consistent and, to be very clear, that consultation with the county board before accepting and rejecting those as well going forward.
Thank you.
Other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes for the resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Josh.
We will move down to administration unless somebody wants to take a break. Otherwise, we'll do this. Everybody good? All right.
Should be good.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for March 11th.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second for the more, March 11th meeting minutes? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
Got a motion and a second for the bills? Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 11 in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just have informational items for the board today. We have a number of promotions in our child support enforcement area as part of our plan associated with the budget approval to move all those child support enforcement specialists to child support officers with no backfill of those enforcement specialists. So we have four individuals that have now been promoted into those child support officer roles. We also filled an Assistant County Attorney II position in the county attorney's office. Then we did have a resignation of a Maintenance Technician II in our Public Works Department. And so we have initiated recruitment to refill that position. And then we also had a resignation of a Clerical Specialist II in our Human Services Department. That's the Human Resources Agenda. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have on any of those items.
Any questions on personnel? Okay. Hearing none, next item, please.
All right. Tab 12 in your packet, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, is a letter from the St. Paul Port Authority. This is revisiting a PACE loan that the board approved previously. The applicant has requested a modification to the assessment amount, increasing from 1.5 billion to 1.75 million. There also was a downward adjustment on the interest rate. And so St. Paul Port Authority is bringing it forward, this revised position forward for the board's consideration. Again, this doesn't really impact the county. It would just serve as kind of the conduit to get those special assessments passed on to pay off that energy savings loan.
Move to approve.
Got a motion and a second for the PACE application revision? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Tab 13 is a joint powers agreement with the state of Minnesota. This is related to the planned extension of Bassett Road on the north side of the Justice Center. The Bureau of Criminal Apprehension is looking to build along that extension. And there was a... was a, what's called a subdivision agreement that was enacted back in 2007, when the Justice Center was first being built, that requires the county to pay for a portion of Bassett Road extension. And so, as the state of Minnesota works with the legislature to get funding for the BCA building that they're planning, they need to move forward with some of this planning. And so this joint powers agreement just focuses on the planning of that building and the design of the road. The road will ultimately be turned back over to the city of Mankato, but we would be committing to covering one half of the $70,000 of design work that's planned here the next few months. So this is part of that subdivision agreement that was signed back in 2007, committing the county to participate in that road design cost.
Okay. Pushes the board.
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 14 in your packet is a proposed employee recognition policy. I've been talking with the board over the last couple of years about the need for a recognition policy to address some of the activities that we think would be beneficial to continue to improve our ability to attract and retain employees. So we've listed out in section three some of the types of recognition that would be covered by this policy. And then item four in the policy describes the structure that we would envision with a committee made up of employees that would help us in terms of designing, kind of the activities that would fall under this policy within the budgetary constraints that would be assigned to the policy. And so, requesting approval of this policy so that we can continue to move this discussion forward and get that committee set up to work on different activities that we hope will be appreciated by our staff and allow us to continue our goal of becoming a preferred employer.
So there'll be mix of department heads and staff, or?
Yeah, I think we would open it up to all staff. You know, we have to probably be careful that we don't overload it with managers, you know, but I certainly would envision a cross-section of employees, including department heads and other supervisory staff, as well as line staff.
Other questions? Got a motion?
I'll move it.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to add, thank you to Jesse for presenting it at the board work session the other day when we walked through it. And Patty, unfortunately, you weren't there, so I'm glad you're asking a few questions, but it looks like a good program, so.
Good.
Yes. As was stated in the meeting the other day, we could ask 10 people what they think it is adequate. You get 10 different answers.
Or maybe 11.
So, it'll be, it'll be an interesting board, I guess, to see what they come up with for us. So it'll be very interesting to have that. So, I think it'll be a good program. All right. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Employee recognition policy passes.
Tab 15 in your packet is a memorandum regarding change orders at All Seasons Arena. These are change orders that were approved by the All Seasons Arena Board back in February. And unless you want me to go through all the different trade packages listed, I'll just jump to the end to say that these change orders total $61,514.42. That does decrease our contingency to $18,171.12, which is a little bit concerning. But I will tell you, at the March All Seasons Arena Board meeting, there was discussion about that, and staff have come up with a plan to shift some fund balance from the operating reserves to this contingency, as well as they've identified some excess property that could be sold, and those proceeds will go into that contingency amount. And so, I don't remember the exact number, but I think they had it up over 250,000 when all was said and done with those changes. So, I appreciate the city of Mankato administrative folks taking a hard look at that, because it was something that I was maybe identifying for them, that I know from our building projects, how those contingency numbers are so important, because things do pop up, especially with the renovation. And they're just starting here in the next few days on the second phase of this, so we do have a lot of work still ahead of us. Commissioner People was on the board, he may have more to add.
I would concur with what Bob's been saying, and yeah, it's, it's a long process, I guess.
It's adequate to do all of them with the same one motion, Bob?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say so. I mean, since the All Seasons Arena Board has already approved it, you're basically approving it as well to indicate your support.
I'll move the motion there for all, all of-
Second. Got a motion and a second for the All Seasons Arena change orders. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That is the end of my agenda. Anything else to bring forward our board?
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. At this time, if there's no other business, I'll go on to commissioners' reports on committees. We will start with Kevin today.
All right. Since our March 11th board meeting, after the board meeting, we all attended the GMG annual meeting, an event. That afternoon, we had a repair hearing on JD 48, as well as the parks committee event that night. March 13th, I had the opportunity to testify on behalf of both Blue Earth County and AMC at the House Tax Committee as we looked at score funding. I'm gonna do that. On the 14th, we had Guburva Policy Committee, as well as our work session. March 17th, I participated in the Blue Earth One Watershed One Plan Policy Committee meeting. On the 18th, we had our work session. 20th, we had our Household Hazardous Waste and our landfill discussion. And then that evening, attended the Blue Earth Township Officers Meeting. And yesterday, on March 24th, I listened in on the AMC legislative update on my way to Slayton for a PACE committee. We had that meeting, as well as Renewable Minnesota Energy Board had a committee, quarterly committee meeting yesterday. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Patty?
All right. I too attended GMG and the Park Advisory Dinner. And then on the 13th, we had the, we had a work session. On the 14th, we had, did we have a work session? It's two days in a row?
It was that IT one.
Oh, okay. On the 17th, oh, this calendar. With St. Pat's. Okay. On the 18th, we had the work session, and, but I wasn't there. 19th, I attended the MCIT training. On the 20th, I had TDS and the tour. And on the 24th, AMC update. That's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vance?
Well, I also attended the GMG annual meeting, Parks Advisory Committee meeting that evening on the 11th. On the 12th, I was asked to speak to the GMG leadership group, and, and then I had an advisory board for community corrections after that. I attended the Household Hazardous Waste Tour on the 20th, and then we had a Township Officials Meeting that evening. Attended a going away party for Matt DeRose, who is moving to West Hennepin as the Director of Public Safety. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mark?
Yep, all right. About the same. March 11th, attended the Greater Mankato Growth Annual Meeting. And then that afternoon, we had a JD ditch 48 repair hearing. And then, of course, that night, we had the Parks Advisory Committee Annual Meeting. And then on March 12th, the chair and I, we had our MICA board meeting. And March 14th, had a county board work session. And we had, March 18th, had this county board, oh, I got that, county board work session. And then the, we had, March 20th, had the Household Hazardous Waste Tour, and Blue Earth County Association of Townships at Decorah Township. And then the virtual meeting on March 24th, as a rural, Energy Board there. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. I was at most of the other items that were mentioned, the Greater Mankato Growth, the ditch, the park advisory. Mark mentioned MICA, which we drove up to the cities and got a report from them. Intergov, Patty, did you have any mention of Intergov?
I forgot Intergov.
Oh, Intergov. So we did have Intergov meeting, and we just gave, only one council member was able to attend, and the administrator gave an update on the public works building and just talked in general about that, and some other projects coming up. They were happy to hear from us, and happy to hear how we're doing on our project. Then, as was mentioned, the work session. A couple items that were not mentioned that I'm on are Social Central Workforce. I was at that meeting. Everything seems to be going very well, but they are unfortunately moving some funding, losing some funding, but of course they would, because unemployment is relatively low around here. And then we had our MVAC meeting that evening, and everything is moving along fairly well there. Unfortunately, though, we did lose our leasing up there for the, we have a big warehouse up there that we've been leasing out, and it's like $14,000 a month. And so we unfortunately lost that person to lease it, so they will be actively trying to find someone to lease that space. The work sessions were already mentioned. I do have to extend a thank you to the Household Hazardous Waste staff. I thought that program went very well with the other counties, and the presentation they had upstairs in the third floor conference room first was very informative. And then to see the two facilities and our household hazardous waste from the last time I was there does look much better. It was always very well-run, but they've made some really good improvements down there, and I think it's gonna be a good asset for Blue Earth County. And then a Township Officers Meeting was mentioned, and that brings me to today. So if there's nothing else to report, for the good of the order, I would entertain a motion to recess.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to recess. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.